Testing one, two, three. This will be the December 7th, 2016 City Council's Special Meeting, followed by the regular meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to a special City Council meeting, December 7th, 2016, approximately 6:45. Reason for the special meeting is to discuss Take Action on Resolution 979. Jim?
Resolution number 979, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, accepting and approving the results of the November 8th, 2016 city election.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 979.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion? Here and now, at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 2. Here and now, back to council, any further?
Yes, sir.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Any further business on special meeting? Here and now, room is closed. We'll start our next meeting at 7:00. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to a regular City Council meeting in the City of Satellite Beach, December 7th, 2016, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Montanaro for a prayer and a pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to make decisions for our city. Please remember all of those who died 75 years ago in Pearl Harbor. Please watch out for our first responders, and please take care of the men and women who serve our country across the globe. And thank you for allowing us to transition a new councilperson in this evening, and to welcome back two new people, two other people, to our council who have served this city. In your name we pray, amen. If you're joining me, a pledge.
I bow to Jesus, who is alive, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, darling. At this time, move on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. This is for non-agenda items. Citizens' comments, floor is open.
City manager, attorney. I would like to thank the city for the way the festival at the beach went, the ORB Festival. It went very smoothly. I live right across the street from the beach. It was a minimal impact to our neighborhood. We had a homeowners' meeting last night, nobody had any complaints. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the police presence there to make that so that there wasn't a back out. Whenever our residents came out, the police officer would make sure that, you know, they were able to merge in because it was very busy. Another thing that I want to point out is, it is residential there, condos to the north, condos to the south, and houses across the street. And the amplification of the music was very reasonable, and really, really appreciate that. I see on the agenda for next month is a question about fire permits. There is a bit of an issue across the street with the drumming that goes on, and it's not like drumming, like musical drumming, it is like repetitive, repetitive, repetitive drumming. It's like five notes, and it goes on for hours. So if that could be included in the consideration for the permit, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. Floor still open for citizens' comments, non-agenda items. No further? Back to council, City Council comments?
I just mentioned a couple of things, Mayor. I took a trip out with Marine Control one day. Great bunch of guys that we have that go out there. And I'd like to say the most important thing, I actually saw them out there, is actually how they were interacting with all the people out there on their docks, or out in their boats, and everybody was just, hi, how you doing? We're happy to see you. It was, I mean, it was just like us walking through the city, except it was up and down the canals. But they're, they're very welcomed out there. I think they do a great job, and I hope to go back out again. I really enjoyed it. It's one of those things, you probably don't see them that often, but they do a great job out there. And I'm sure everybody has the same feelings about the Ocean Reef Festival. I thought it went great. Everybody I talked to loved it, and it went really well. I did get a chance to talk to a couple of police officers. I think they did an outstanding job this year out there. I noticed from coming up the road, you could see the lights a long way, it seemed like the traffic actually slowed down a lot better this year. I didn't hear any of the usual squealing and screaming of brakes and tires and stuff, so I would say it went really well, everybody seemed to have a good time. That was it, thank you.
As a, one of the board members for Anglers for Conservation, and one of the partners in the Ocean Reef Beach Fest, I just want to say that between the Surf Riders and Pure Ocean Production in the City of Satellite Beach, we put on an excellent event Saturday. It was probably one of the most well-attended events that I've ever seen in Satellite Beach. Our staff did an excellent job. Thank you, Courtney, for, you know, putting all of that together, together, and allowing, you know, our police department and Public Works to be there, and our rec department to make sure that everything flowed the way it did that day, and y'all did an excellent job. So, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you.
The only thing I have, council, is I would, in front of you, I think you have a letter from, from me to Congressman Posey. As you know, we've had a change in leadership in Washington, and the proposed new head of the HHS is Tom Price from Atlanta. He's an orthopedic surgeon by training, and I'd like to see if we can have Congressman Posey approach him about some of the initiatives that we have, and see if we can get some funding along those lines, to continue our efforts forward. You know, we've got, we've not, got things going in the Fire Department, and Police Department, and the Rec Department's on top of it with, with helping people, and I just want to see if we could, if it would be possible to approach this, to see what we can get in line for, coming out of Washington.
I think that's probably something, you know, the Space Coast League of Cities does their fast trip up to Washington.
Okay.
I know Pat O'Neill and a couple of other people from the Space Coast League of Cities are going. I think you might want to bring that to the Space Coast League of Cities, and see if we can get that included as one of the initiatives when we, when our team goes to Washington.
When is, when is the plan to go to Washington?
They're going up, I believe, in February or March.
You do that.
So we've got time at the next board meeting, you can bring it up.
Next board meeting, okay. Thank you.
Just on the letter, consensus?
I'm good with it, yes.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
I have no comment at this time, I'll save it for later. Courtney, moving on to Agenda Item 5, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. December 17th, we have the annual Jingle Bell Two-Miler, which will begin at the Satellite Beach Library at 5:45 PM, and you can register for that at Running Zone. We also have Banana River Power Squadron Annual Boat Parade, which is also on December 17th, and participants will be assembling at 6:00 PM at the north end of the Grand Canal and head south. For informational items, December 21st, regular City Council meeting has been canceled due to the holiday. And also, I just wanted to give you a heads-up that we will be asking you to start creating your priorities for the 2017 year, and we will be talking about those at the January 4th meeting. So we're hoping that you all could start putting those together. If you need any assistance or want to discuss that, just give me a call. The Fire Department will be holding their open house on December 11th at 6:00 PM. That's always a very well-attended evening. And we have the nominations for, I'm sorry, the city's annual holiday luncheon will be held on December 15th at 11:00 PM at this David R. Schechter Community Center. We have a City Hall Pond Shore Restoration Volunteer Project planting, which is going to be this weekend on the Saturday. That'll start at 9:00 AM, so if you're interested in volunteering for that, just come, come to City Hall at 9:00 AM and help us plant. The planting will be guided by the Marine Resources Council and Surf Rider Foundation. Santa will be riding through the city again, and we have posted the Fire Department's Twilight Santa in my report, we posted it on, in the Beach caster, and I just put it on Facebook today, so that's going out to the community. I have received a complimentary email from Corporal Robbie Brooks, I think I talked to you about that last, at your last meeting, it was a very popular Facebook post. And we also received an email from Bud Meyer and his wife thanking the fire chief for bringing Thanksgiving dinner to their home. I have two action items for you this evening. The first one is that we are requesting permission from City Council to work with a company named Allied Group, USA Inc., and the Florida Institute of Technology, to use continuous laminar flow inversion and oxygenation technology as a test in the canal at the end of Island Drive, so it's, it's the canal, Redwood Court Canal. And what we'd like to do is design that as, as a test. They are putting the infrastructure in for free, and FIT, Dr. Treffery will be analyzing that project as part of a grant that he is, he is applying for. The easement at the end of the canal of Island Drive will be used to place the generator, so we're working with Jim to make sure that we can actually place the generator there. And we would like to send out a letter to the residents and hold a meeting with them to talk about that project, and what the impacts to them would be. The impacts that we've reviewed are incredibly small. In fact, I think most of the people on the canal wouldn't actually know that that was going on. Matt White is one of the residents at the canal. Matt, can you raise your hand? He's back there. He's the one that actually brought this project to us. He went to the FIT forum and heard about this project and brought, brought them to the city. So because of micro removal is so difficult in canals, and very expensive, especially trying to get around the docks, we want to try this type of technology to see if it does reduce the nutrient load in the canals, to see if we could offset the costs of micro removal in those areas. So if there are no objections to that, we would like to, to, to move forward with that. We would send out a letter to the residents, meet with them, have the company come out, show them the, the equipment, and, and then begin to put that in as soon as we get the permits. So it is an action item, and I would need your, your, yeah.
Yeah, I'll need a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to have the City of Satellite Beach work with Allied Group, USA Incorporated, and Florida Institute of Technology to use a continuous laminar flow inversion and oxygenation technology as a test.
Second. A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer.
I have a question.
Okay.
What, you know, what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as, you know, notifying the residents, having the meetings, is this like January, February timeframe?
Yes.
And we're going to try and, okay.
Because it's an action item, I will open up for public comment on this action item. Here are no public comments, back to council. So Dr. Treffery is going to be sort of the overseer of the project?
Well, he'll be monitoring the project, because he has an interest in it from a scientific standpoint. So that actually lends a lot of credibility to the project, so we would recommend him to move forward with that.
And who's going to oversee it? The?
It would be the company and, and the city.
Okay.
Dr. Treffery is the individual who is, when you and I did that seminar over at FIT, he was, he's like the foremost authority on Muck.
Right.
So he's, he's a great person to handle this.
Any further discussion? Here and now, Lenore.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Courtney?
The other item I have is, we do have the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and that's scheduled for December 16th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. The first two hours will be dedicated to local government representatives. So we would like to go ahead and submit what we, what we want to discuss. I just need to know who is attending, or who would like to attend to, to make that presentation. There are several items that I would recommend, including in the presentation, which would include funding for septic-to-sewer conversions, local control for septic permits, using capacity funds and FDOT state-level monies for transit operations, and, what was the other one? I had another one. And then more funding for micro removal. And that would, more funding from the state would enable the canals to be completed at some point. So that would be my recommendation, however, you know, we would add more, as you wish.
And the person who makes the presentation, it could be you, correct?
I can make, sure.
I'm going to be out of town that day.
My suggestion is to have Courtney make the presentation, she's her mayor, we discussed most of these.
Happy to go with that.
Is that good with that? Who else is going to be able to attend?
I think your future councilwoman can also attend with me.
Yeah, no, I can't, Frank.
Okay.
Okay.
It is an action item, so let me open it up to the public, for, this is an action item, so therefore, any public comment on this at this time. Here and now, back to council.
Motion for the city's legislative issues to be brought to the Brevard County Legislative Delegation on December 16th, with Courtney and possibly Councilwoman Gibson.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by, I think, Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion? Here and now, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, any further business for me?
We just want to wish you a very happy holiday, all the staff, and the community, both the community and you, so.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing on Agenda Item 6, which is Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1130, and this is a public hearing. Jim?
Ordinance number 1130, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 30, Land Development Regulations, Article 5, Building Regulations, Division 3, Fences and Walls, by creating fence height requirements applicable to parcels of budding canals, providing for conflict clause, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing an effective date, so second reading of ordinance number 1130.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1130 on second reading.
Second. A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Present it, John.
I'll just, dear, as you recall, on November 16th, we approved ordinance number 1130 on first reading. Since then, we had a second reading, we discussed postponing that ordinance to look, to make sure that by adding an opaque portion to that ordinance, we weren't impacting pool regulations. We have since come to the conclusion that we would not be impacting pool regulations, that we could include that component in the ordinance. We rewrote that to address some of the concerns with the word perpendicular and things like that. However, we do have some resident, in, some residents in the Island Drive neighborhood, if you drop down Island Drive and hit that, that may want to have a larger setback where the opaque and the decreased height applies. However, staff reviewed most of the other canals throughout the city, and are concerned with doing a blanket ordinance that would go further than the 10 feet, because there are other canals that, it seems like, you know, every neighborhood has its culture, and, and Grant and Jackson, there are fences that run very close to the canal front, stockade fences. So we don't, what we don't want to do is pass an ordinance and then make those people non-conforming, and, you know, once a hurricane hits or something like that, they wouldn't be able to been, build a fence back to what they have before, which is always very frustrating to residents. So what we would like to do is pass this ordinance, we would like to take care of the concerns with the Island Drive neighborhood by sending out a survey just to that neighborhood and see how they feel. If they do want a stronger ordinance, we can come back and write an ordinance specific to those, to that area. But right now, we believe that the 10 feet is good for the whole community as it is.
Anna? Portion, excuse me, 5 here with the underlines is the addition, correct?
That's correct.
Discussion from council? Okay, at this time, open up, excuse me, open up for public comment on ordinance number 1130. Room is open for public comment. Here and now, back to council, council comments?
I think it's a good start. I mean, if there are some concerns that I kind of agree with Courtney, I think it's good that we do a survey and find out what the residents in that area want, but this is, this is something that gets us moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
You have seen him.
Yes, motion passes. To the staff, thank you. John, thank you very much. Be safe.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we close the public hearing and move on to Agenda Item 7, Adoption of Minutes of the November 16th, 2016 Regular Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 16th meeting as submitted.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Any discussion? Here and now, Lenore?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Sheriff Dino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, transition, and I believe Melinda Gibson will be the first, sworn in by her husband, Michael.
Sure.
We'll stay up there, Steve.
We'll stay here.
Guys.
We'll hold the fort.
Be nice.
Ready?
I'm more nervous than I was that day.
So I state your name?
I, Melinda Gibson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold?
That I will support and uphold.
The constitutions of the United States and the state of Florida.
The constitutions of the United States and the state of Florida.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
City Code.
City Code.
And city ordinances.
And city ordinances.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Discharge of the duties?
Discharge of the duties.
Of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember?
Of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Sorry. Careful. [applause]
Oh, that was good, man, yeah, I liked that.
I mark Breimer do solemnly swear?
I mark Breimer do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the constitution of the United States?
That I will uphold the constitution of the United States.
And the state of Florida?
And the state of Florida.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter?
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
City Code?
City Code.
And city ordinances?
And city ordinances.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge?
And I, and I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of Satellite Beach City Councilmember?
The duties of Satellite Beach City Councilmember?
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
All right, so, all right, you ready? All right. Now, remember to just remind you.
Okay. I, Frank Cattino, do solemnly swear?
I, Frank Cattino, do solemnly swear?
That I will support and uphold the constitutions of the United States?
That I will support and uphold the constitutions of the United States?
And the state of Florida?
And the state of Florida?
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter?
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter?
City Code and city ordinances?
City Code and city ordinances?
And I will well and faithfully discharge?
And I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of City of Satellite Beach?
The duties of the office of the City of Satellite Beach?
Mayor, to which I have been elected.
Mayor, to which I have been elected. Thanks, brother.
[applause]
Okay. At this time, Councilwoman Gibson, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to thank my family for being patient and putting up with a lot of people in and out of our house, a lot of stamping, and a lot of work, and all the hard work that they put in. And I want to thank everyone that helped us out, and that voted for myself, and Mayor Cattino, and Councilman Breimer, Vice Mayor Breimer. I feel humbled and honored that the city felt that they would elect this hometown girl to help our city move it forward in a sustainable manner, and I have faith that I will do good for all of you, and thank you so much. [applause]
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Leslie, and mother for being here tonight. Thank you guys for, for being here. To the city, the City Hall, Courtney, thanks for all the work you guys have done. I mean, to all of us as candidates, you guys have been very supportive of us, and Lenore, all your efforts to keep everybody on track, I very much appreciate it, especially the emails saying, "File this now" type of things are always very helpful, because you forget these dates as they go by. To the citizens of Satellite Beach, thank you again for the honor of being up here, and I mean that sincerely. This is, this has taught me so much over the years, having the opportunity to do this. I've met so many people that have just touched me and my family in so many different ways, and it's really an honor to, to be up here with you guys, and I just want to express my appreciation for that opportunity. To Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lorraine Gott, she was, she was certainly, it was an honor to serve with her. I mean, the lady really works hard for this city, and I was just so glad that, that she was able to do what she was, has done. She was always one of those that's working so hard in the background to make everything, sure, everything worked really well. I've known her for a long, long time, and I just, if you're listening, Lorraine, I appreciate all the opportunities that you've brought to our city to, to make it a better place. To Dom and to Steve, look forward to working with you guys, you're both first-class individuals, and I'm just glad to be up here with you. Thank you, thank you both. To Mendy, I just got to tell you, the citizens of Satellite Beach, this is, her and her husband are really, really first-class people. They are really sharp people. Mendy's going to be such an asset to the, to City of Satellite Beach. She's one of those you're going to want to hold on to, because she's good, she could be around for a long, long time, and be very helpful to this city, so I do look forward to serving with you. And lastly, to our, to our mayor, Frank and I have known each other for a long, long time, we've been friends for a long, long time. A lot of times, we were competitors on opposite baseball teams, so we would go at it, just back and forth, and unfortunately, he probably won more than I did, so, but anyhow. But the, the story of this, real, real quickly, was that I got involved in City Council because of Frank. He actually approached me after a Little League game one day and said, "Would you be interested?" And I said, "Absolutely not." And he tried to talk to my wife, and, and she said, "Nah, it's your turn." So I ended up getting involved in City Council. But Frank's a dear friend of mine, of our family and hus, and wife Linda, you guys have been always very close to us, and I just thank you, man, I'm glad to be up here with you again, and just, it's a real honor and blessing to be here with you, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
I can tell you I'm very humbled, I can honestly say, as the young person running around the streets of this town, that I never have imagined myself up here, maybe in the chief's office. And I'm really thank my wife, she's been my best friend for 48 years, and I couldn't do without her, thank you. To the city, the city employees, it's amazing jobs you do, to your professionals, and to everyone in City Hall and all the different departments, you come to work every day to make the city better, and it shows in all the letters that we get from you, and it's an honor to, to help you guys out. To all the people that work really hard, there's too many to mention here, but I know in a couple more days, we're going to do this again, and have a little party, and I thank you, because it shows what people care about the city, and it's an amazing place. And I've been involved in it all my life, and living here, but really, almost 20 years in council, we're being involved in the city business. And we always have had times in the city where there's people or ideas that come along that hurt us, and we've always been able to do good and come out of those times, and it's because of the people that live here. People that volunteer an incredible amount of time. You look around at all the departments and everything, the amount of volunteers that we have, it's amazing. And it's an honor to serve, with everybody on council, I'm really looking forward to. To Mark, who I've known since like 1965, and a long time.
Long time.
Lorraine, who's put out an incredible amount of time in our city, and I know she's not here tonight, but we'll, you know, she'll be here helping us in other things that she always does for our city. So I'm looking forward to it, and thank everybody very much. [applause] But Frank's a dear friend of mine, of our family and wife Linda. You guys have been always very close to us, and I just thank you, man. I'm glad to be up here with you again, and it's a real honor and blessing to be here with you, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
I can tell you I'm very honored and humbled. I can honestly say as the young person running around the streets of this town that I never have imagined myself up here. Maybe in the chief's office. And I'm really thanking my wife, who's been my best friend for 48 years, and I couldn't do without her. Thank you. To the city, the city employees, it's amazing the jobs you do, you're professionals. And to everyone in city hall and all the different departments, you come to work every day to make the city better, and it shows in all the letters that we get from you, and it's an honor to help you guys out. To all the people that work really hard, there's too many to mention here, but I know in a couple more days, we're going to do this again and have a little party, and I thank you because it shows what people care about the city, and it's an amazing place. And I've been involved in it all my life, living here, but really almost 20 years in council or being involved in the city business. And we always have had times in the city where there's people or ideas that come along that hurt us, and we've always been able to do good and come out of those times, and it's because of the people that live here. People that volunteer an incredible amount of time. You look around at all the departments and everything, the amount of volunteers that we have, it's amazing. And it's an honor to serve us, everybody on council. I'm really looking forward to it. To Mark, who I've known since like 1965, and a long time.
Long time.
And Lorraine, who's put out an incredible amount of time in our city, and I know she's not here tonight, but she'll be here helping us in other things that she always does for our city. So I'm looking forward to it, and thank everybody very much.
Mayor, I just wanted to say real quick on behalf of the employees, we are really happy to see you all here. I can't emphasize that enough. And all jokes aside, you know, you all have embraced the idea that treating your employees well will get you a greater return, and I can assure you that our employees will work miracles for you because you treat them well and you appreciate them. So on behalf of them, we thank you for everything you do for us. We thank you for the way you treat us, the good words that you give to us all the time. It means the world. And, you know, to Mindy, we know you're going to fit in that way. We can already tell. And I just, you know, Mindy, we grew up together, and it's funny to see us here, you know. I think when we were 14, running around the streets of Satellite Beach, we never would have realized that we would be, you know, on the dais of City Hall. But it is great to see you here, and we're real excited with you being here. And just to Lorraine, she was one of the councilwoman members that always, always looked out after their employees, and she does so much still, I mean, behind the scenes, that a lot of people don't realize what she does. And we just want to say that we appreciate her. We're going to miss her, but hopefully we'll keep her around in other ways. But, you know, just a heartfelt thank you to her, and we hope she enjoys her time off. I know it's hard to be in your position, and again, we appreciate you and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, Lorraine, if you're listening, happy birthday because today is Lorraine's birthday. So that's it. Thank you very much. Any comments? Okay. At this time, moving on to Agenda None, number nine, appointments. At this time, you need to elect Vice Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Steve Osmer to Vice Mayor position.
Second. A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion?
Thank you.
Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The next appointment is to the Space Coast League of Cities voting delegates. Normally, it's the mayor and the city manager, if you want to keep it that way.
Consensus, you need a motion? I'll make a motion that we delegate the mayor as the voting delegate and the alternate as the city manager. Courtney, back up.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro and second by Councilman Breimer. Are there any discussions? Senator Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 8, excuse me, Agenda Item 10. Items for the next regular meetings. The next regular meetings in July, if you remember when.
January.
January.
And if you can, on the goals given to them, it's massive because I know there'll be some duplicate, and so many to go through and so forth. Anything else that you would like to see on the agenda, please, for.
The only thing I would ask is, you know, based on Dominic's recommendation about getting in front of the Space Coast League of Cities, can we ask, and I don't mind going to that, I guess it's a January meeting, can we have Lenore get us on that agenda for, just at the business meeting or whatever? I'll be happy to do that, if you can get us on there.
Right. So anything else, please?
You'll probably want to go to the board meeting first.
Okay. In January, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further business? On the board, here are none. End of the agenda.